There we go. Good evening, everyone in District 196. Thank you for attending our Monday, June 23 regular school board meeting. At this time, please rise if you are able and join me in the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like us to share a brief moment of silence for Deerwood Elementary School's second grade teacher, Heidi Bianconi, who passed away on June 21. Thank you. All right. Good evening, Board. As always, the first item of business is the motion to approve the agenda. We do have a revised agenda as our special communication request speaker is not available tonight, so that has been removed. Is there a motion to approve the revised agenda?
So moved. Second?
That was Catherine, right? Who said the first one? Jackie?
That would be me.
Oh, it came on this side. I heard it over here. Thank you. You guys are confusing me. Robin and Anna, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. All right. That brings us to the fun portion of our meeting that we usually look forward to the most, and that is recognition by the school board. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Pete Roback to the podium to introduce the Rosemont High School Boys Golf Team. The team placed third in the state tournament.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Bolsoni, and community members. My name is Anthony Mahady, and I am a teacher and head boys golf coach at Rosemont High School. I am honored to recognize an outstanding achievement by the Rosemont High School Boys Golf Team. Two weeks ago, our team secured third place at the Minnesota State High School Golf Tournament, a tremendous accomplishment reflecting skill, discipline, and dedication. The team demonstrated not only athletic excellence, but also academic excellence, earning the Team Academic All-State Award for maintaining the highest average GPA of all Section III AAA schools. Whether facing strong competition or challenging weather, these young athletes rose to every occasion and represented our school with pride. This accomplishment was truly a team effort. We had 10 individuals earning varsity letters throughout our season. The section champion and third-place state roster included captains Joey Mackinac and Mason Eden, who can't be here tonight because they are competing, and then we have Wyatt Holmes, Carter Rath, Cooper Zdowski, and Carson Wickman. Please join me in applauding these student athletes and their families for an incredible season. Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to welcome head coach Ryan Denell to the podium to introduce the Eastview High School Boys Volleyball Team. The team finished third in the first ever MSHSL sanctioned state tournament.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am, as he said, Ryan Denell. I'm the head coach at Eastview High School for our boys volleyball program. As many of you may know, and as he mentioned, this was the very first year of sanctioned boys volleyball in Minnesota. We're the 29th state in the United States to add that as a boys activity, and I've been fortunate enough to be a part of the grassroots seven years of club volleyball that led to this season in Minnesota. And so it was very fun for me, as someone who's helped with the development of the sport, to see not only the very first sport state tournament, but also to get an opportunity to see our guys get to compete at it. This was an amazing season because we've been blessed at Eastview with a lot of great support. Our admin team has been tremendously supportive of us, helping us with getting the program started with gym time and trying to give us whatever support we could. Matt Percival has been a great help. And then, when it came time for it to get sanctioned and it got approved by the State High School League, then the board said, yeah, we'll let you guys do this. And not every district that had a club program had a board that was willing to back up the transition. And so we were very, very grateful for that support from you going into this year so that we were able to let these guys go do what they are so passionate about. We had a really outstanding group of people. These guys all know a lot about volleyball, and they all are great competitors, but on top of it, they are one of the most fun bunch of humans that I've had an opportunity to coach as well. They are outstanding students. They achieved Minnesota State High School League gold standard academically as a varsity team this year, which is where we normally hang out as a club program. We were successful in the classroom as well. We had a couple of Academic All-State members on the team that sort of led the charge in that area. But our season this year, the team finished 29 and 4. We spent the entire season ranked in the top three in the state. A lot credit to their hard work and their skill. We were undefeated in the first-ever South Suburban Conference Championship, in addition to winning the first-ever Section 1A championship in undefeated fashion without dropping a set. And then at the state tournament, we played three great matches, lost to a really great Rogers team in the semifinals, and then the guys did a great job of bouncing back to beat Spring Lake Park to finish third this year. They have been fun to watch grow, and they have been fun to be around on and off the court. So we have about half of our crew here today. So one of our captains is here this evening, Colin Nathan, and then other members here are Brayston El, Tori Richter, A.J. Yang, Alex Kalas, Garrett Pash, Ben Matthews, Tashome Eid, and Will Fulford. So please join me in giving this group of young men a round of applause for their first year.
Next, I'd like to welcome Eagan High School Principal Polly Rikowsky to the podium. She will introduce us to the EHS State Track and Field second and third place finishers.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm Polly Rikowsky, the principal of Eagan, standing in for Jason Elias and the coach tonight. So please accept the fact that I'm honored to be here with you young people. And here at Eagan High School, we have to say we're very honored to celebrate an incredible spring track season and to honor our outstanding athletes. The spring season has been nothing short of inspiring, and we're excited to recognize the hard work, the dedication, and the achievement of all our student athletes. Before I have the students walk by and get congratulated, parents and family in the crowd tonight from Eagan, could you stand, please, and be recognized? Thank you. I do want to thank the school board, Mr. Hanson, Superintendent Bolsoni, for their continued support of our athletic programs, our student athletes, and our dedicated coaches, and the facilities that make it all possible. Your commitment plays a vital role in fostering a positive and enriching experience for Eagan, our community, and 196. Your efforts do not go unnoticed, and we deeply appreciate the impact they have on the lives of our students and staff. Thank you for all you do. So on to our athletes. They could not all be here tonight, but we do want to recognize the young people. So in third place in the boys 800 meter is Noah Daniel. Noah, can you step forward or wave? Let him know who you are. And in second place, the 4x400, three of our athletes, Jacob Sondak, Declan Dwyer, and Tyler Spurrel could not be here, but Noah Daniel was anchoring that. So congratulations, Noah. And then we also are recognizing third place in the boys 4x800, Liam Frank, Cole Color, Ethan Willskey could not be with us, and guess who? Noah Daniel. He's the anchor on the relays. So congratulations, guys. Would you like to go across and shake hands?
And last for recognitions, but certainly not least, we'd like to please welcome girls' head coach Sarah Hatley and boys' head coach, there we go. I knew I'd get picked up eventually. They can hear me. No, I got boys, too. I'm calling them up together. And boys' head coach Sarah Hatley to the podium to introduce the Rosemont High School State Track and Field second and third place finishers.
All right. Good evening, Board members, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger. I'm here to talk about Cavari Flowers. Cavari was second place in the AAA division at State Track Meet in the 300-meter hurdles. He ran 38 point, well, his season's best was 38.65, which was fourth all-time at Rosemont, and the three that are ahead of him were all-state champions. He's got one more year. He's a junior, so I think his goals are pretty straightforward heading into next season. Shouldn't be a real long goal-setting session. In addition to number four all-time, number two in the state of Minnesota in 300-meter hurdles, he was also key member of our school record-setting 4x1 relay team, which is also an all-state group at the state meet. He also was a section champion in the 110 hurdles and qualified for state in that event also. Last season was a key member of our state championship team, and obviously will be a key member of our group next year. Cavari is a multi-sport athlete. He has played basketball and football in addition to track and field, and really proud of how he's kind of grown and taken on a leadership role, and has really become one of the elite kids in the state of Minnesota in our sport. Cavari.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm Sarah Hatley, and I am the girls' track and field coach at Rosemont High School. And I'm here this evening to talk about Abby Essler. And if Paul and Stacia, you guys could wave or stand, there we go, that's her parents over there. So it's always a good thing to be invited to this evening. That means something went well in our season, so I always look forward to that invitation. Track and field is a sport of true athleticism, showing speed, strength, explosiveness, and plenty of other things. Abby is a great example of an elite athlete. She has tried just about every event and could be good at all of them. I think the only one that she would maybe say no to would be the 3200. But truly, she has tried just about everything. She came out as a seventh grader and has worked her way up through the ranks and, you know, to being the elite athlete she is today. She has worked so hard. She's so coachable. Everyone says that about her. And so that's really where, you know, her strengths are, is that she's willing to learn and change things and do whatever she needs to do to accomplish great things. So to talk about some of her accomplishments this year, she was all-conference, all-state, all-state academic, and is a school record holder in the 4x100 meter relay. And that was last year and this year. And then this year, to talk why we're here this evening, she was a section champion in both the long jump and the 4x100. And so she ran at the state meet in the 4x1, 4x2, and long jump. She placed third in the long jump. Just to give you a little background on that, she was ranked or seeded 12 going into that and ended up, yeah, and ended up placing third. She had nearly a foot PR going from section to state. You know, and there are plenty of athletes who crumble under pressure, and Abby's just not one of them. She shines. And so we weren't surprised at all by that result. You know, my husband is one of the jumps coach, and he said, she's gonna go big. This is gonna be a big meet for her. And she made it happen. And so we knew. Her first jump, she went 18.1, and I was at personal best, and just kept doing better as she went. So congratulations, Abby. She's only, she just finished her sophomore year, so she's got two more years. We're so excited to see what she can do over the next couple of years. I think that long jump and maybe triple jump records are within sight. So hopefully we'll be here, I'm not gonna say hopefully, we will be here next year.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your support, everything you do.
All right. Next on the agenda, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Johnson. Thank you, Board. I'm gonna speak from the lectern tonight because we're gonna bring some people up for some introductions as well. But before I start that, I want to say congratulations to students from Apple Valley High School's Sister Act production, which had the exceptional honor of performing at the historic State Theater on June 9 as part of the Spotlight Theater Awards. Spotlight is Minnesota's qualifying event for the National High School Musical Theater Awards, which are starting now as we speak in New York City. Apple Valley High School junior Anaya Bostic, who had the lead role in Sister Act, also won the Spotlight Triple Threat Award and is just one of four Minnesota students to receive an all-expenses-paid trip to New York City. Congratulations are also due to Molly Pittson, a graduating senior from Rosemont High School, who earned one of only two Spotlight Student Publicist state scholarships. This honor includes a cash prize to support her continued development in theater, dance, music, and journalism. She will attend the University of Minnesota Twin Cities to study strategic communications and public relations. Congratulations goes out to all the District 196 students who competed at the National Speech and Debate Association's national tournament, which was held last week in Des Moines, Iowa. District 196 had more than 20 competitors representing all four high schools who competed at this national tournament. Three Apple Valley High School students qualified for the final rounds of competition and finished with two runners-up and one national champion. Yahir Rodriguez placed second in dramatic interpretation. Isra Yazin placed second in original oratory, and Anaya Bostic was the national champion in program oral interpretation, the same Anaya who won the Theater Spotlight Award that I just mentioned. District 196 has had more champions, national champions, over the last 25 years than any single state in the country. Think about that. Anaya's national championship is the 35th since the year 2000 for District 196. And not only do we have a national champion, but this week we are also celebrating an international champion. Cassie Gonzalez, a senior at Apple Valley High School, won the Wrestling U17 Pan Am Championship for Team USA in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil last weekend. Congratulations also go out to our Rosemont High School baseball team on qualifying for and participating in the Class 4A state tournament this month. After falling to the state champions in round one, the Irish came back to win the consolation bracket. Next up, I'd like to introduce Joel Miltier. He's our new Director of Human Resources. I'll have him come up, and then I'll introduce him. Welcome, Joel. We'll have you standing right here, and we'll switch spots. Joel is currently the Director of Human Resources in South St. Paul Public Schools, bringing 22 years of experience in human resources, 17 years in public education. He started his career at Target Corporation before moving to the Physicians Group at the University of Minnesota, and then he found his purpose in public education as the manager of employee services with Anoka Henepin Schools before securing leadership roles. There, he was in Osseo Area High Schools and Richfield Public Schools. He's led negotiation strategy with labor unions in his last three districts and brings extensive experience leading performance, management initiatives, modernizing HR technology systems, and ensuring compliance with state and federal employment laws. We appreciate the proactive, transparent, and service-oriented approach he will bring to this position. His work demonstrates strong support of staff and supervisors with a student-centered lens. As Director of Human Resources in District 196, Joel will be responsible for administering collective bargaining agreements with the district's 12 employee groups, advising administrators on employee relations, managing administration of employee benefit programs, leading the district's insurance committee, and ensuring district compliance with applicable laws, regulations, policies, collective bargain agreements, and state and federal reporting requirements. And now I'd like to invite Joel to the lectern to say a few words.
Thank you. Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Bolsoni, and District 196 community members, I am truly honored to be here tonight. As I mentioned in my interview process, I've been looking at District 196 for my entire career and education as the place to be. This is an amazing district, and I am truly honored to be your new Director of Human Resources. This district has a long history of excellence, equity, and innovation in everything that you're doing, and I'm excited to be part of that work and contributing to it. I know that as we move forward in this work, and we're working together on recruitment, development, and retention of a talented and diverse staff, that we will definitely be working to encourage them to be strong and working in all of our relationships, educating, developing, and inspiring our students for a lifelong success. Thank you for this opportunity inviting me tonight. I'm excited to begin the work.
All right. Thank you, Joel. Joel officially starts on July 1, so welcome to 196. Next, I would like to invite Director Jeremy Sorensen up. He is going to introduce Donzel Dixon, who is our new principal at Westview Elementary School.
All right. Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Jeremy Sorensen. I'm the Director of Elementary Ed. In April, we went through a process to fill three elementary principal positions that were open due to retirements. We have completed that process and are excited to introduce our new principals. We'll be introducing one of our new principals this evening, and then we'll have additional introductions in July. So tonight, I'm pleased to announce the selection of Donzel Dixon as the next principal of Westview Elementary in Apple Valley. Mr. Dixon brings a dynamic combination of educational leadership and corporate experience to his new role. For the past three years, he has served as the Assistant Administrator at Greenleaf Elementary, where he has been recognized for his strategic, student-centered leadership, commitment to staff development, and ability to foster a positive school culture. Before joining education, Mr. Dixon held a high-impact role at Target Corporation in business analytics and software development. His background in data and system thinking enhances his ability to lead with clarity and purpose. Over the past three years as Assistant Administrator at Greenleaf Elementary, Mr. Dixon has provided a calm and visible presence in the school community. He is someone who values relationships, brings joy to celebrations, and ensures that data-driven decisions serve the needs of all learners. With that, I'd like to introduce Donzel Dixon as the next principal of Westview Elementary. Congratulations, Donzel.
Thank you, Jeremy. Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Bolsoni. I just want to say that I am first extremely, incredibly grateful, also very humble, to step into the role as the next principal at Westview Elementary. Very excited to continue to build on the amazing things that Westview already does that makes that school very special, and along the way, continue to build on the things that I can do as far as supporting families, students, and staff, ensuring that everyone feels welcome, ensuring that everyone feels loved and cared for, and that we're continuing to grow and follow through on our mission of our district. Lastly, I just want to also thank my family and my friends in the crowd, and my family online who's watching. I could not do this work without them. So my wife, Lintrell, my son, Emery, and my daughter, Lexi, thank you all. We got this. We're gonna do this journey together, and I'm excited. So thank you.
All right. Chairperson Johnson, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Bolsoni. Next item on the agenda was our special communication request, which was revised, removed, so we don't have a speaker tonight. That brings us to our consent agenda. Board members, we have 24 items on the consent agenda to review tonight. Those items include the minutes of the June 9, 2025, regular school board meeting, the minutes of the June 9, 2025, special school board meeting, school board member employment, appointments for the Legislative Advisory Council, quarterly advertising revenue, advertising revenue, gifts, quarterly gifts, grants, summary of claims for May 2025, schedule of investments for May 2025, depositories for the investment of funds, official depositories of corresponding accounts, investment instruments, electronic fund transfers, personnel, additional services assignment for area learning center coordinator, additional service assignment for bond construction coordinator, Apple Valley High School Activity Center addition and renovation, alternate number one, certified census, employment agreements, additional FTE, employment agreements, probationary, termination and nonrenewal probationary teachers, and catastrophic accident insurance. Are there any items on the consent agenda which board members would like to remove tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? I heard you, Robin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And Anna, all those in favor of approving the consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent agenda approved on a 6-0 vote. All right. That brings us to our reports, and I would like to welcome our presenters for the AAA report to the podium, Bill Blatzheim, Polly Rikowsky, Matt Percival, Pete Roback, and Eric Hanson.
Okay. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the school board, Superintendent Bolsoni. Tonight, we'll be providing a District 196 AAA report, where we proudly highlight our district's commitment to academics, athletics, and the arts, as well as a fourth day tonight activities. Tonight, there is no board action needed. This report is informational only and reflects our commitment to providing a well-rounded educational experience, showcasing the hard work of our high school students, the dedication of our staff, and the collaborative spirit that drives excellence in every area. Although we have opportunities in each of the areas in our middle schools and our elementary schools, tonight we will focus on our comprehensive high schools. We are excited to share high-level information and continue to foster a culture of learning, competition, and creativity. Joining me tonight are Dr. Polly Rikowsky, principal of Eagan High School, Mr. Bill Blatzheim, Assistant Principal at Apple Valley High School, Mr. Matt Percival, Athletic Director and Assistant Principal at Eastview High School, and Mr. Pete Roback, principal of Rosemont High School. Our commitment to the AAA philosophy, academics, arts, and athletics, aligns directly with our vision of our strategic roadmap. We strive to engage students through a variety of opportunities in academics, arts, and athletics, guided by our core values, student-centeredness, wellness, achievement, collaboration, and community. These core values are at the center of our work. We believe that providing multiple opportunities for our students to engage and connect in their school allows for growth in many areas, including social connections, personal confidence, perseverance, and accountability, all the while being led by a teacher, a caring adult, or a coach who provides encouragement and support. or a coach who provides encouragement and support. At the last board meeting, when the Leatherman Community Survey results were shared, it was clear that the responses to the community question, "What do you like most about District 196 schools?", highlighted a few key themes. Following the top response of "good teachers," which is great, the next most frequently mentioned strengths listed were a wide range of programs, strong academic performance, and high student achievement. I believe that this is a result of our district's commitment to the AAA, also including activities. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. Polly Rykowski, Principal of Egan High School, and she will share information on our first A, academics.
Good evening. It's my honor to be here to talk about academics in the high schools. Certainly a very, very important and very big topic. This school year, 3,278 high school students were enrolled in at least one advanced placement course. That's about 36.3% of our students' grades nine through 12. 787 students were enrolled in college in the schools, typically through the U of M, but also some at Mankato State, and that would be students mostly in grades 11, 12, but also some 10th graders, and that comprises 11.6% of our students taking advantage of that opportunity. Over 500 students were enrolled in full or part-time post-secondary enrollment options. That's about 8.5% of grades 10, 11, and 12 in our schools. Additionally, 5,780 students were enrolled in at least one career and technical education course in our district. That would include a variety of courses, all of which are career-related. That's about 64% of our students taking advantage of that. We have seen a 26% increase in advanced placement enrollments from year '23-'24 to this school year '24-'25, including, of course, the new offering in AP World History for Freshmen, which started this year. Each high school administered between 1,300 and 1,700 advanced placement exams over two weeks in May, an increase of 10% over the previous year. Hundreds of students are AP Scholars at a variety of levels in each graduating class at each of our high schools. National Merit Scholars, seniors in our high schools, numbered 47 this school year in our school district. Between 73% and 77% of the class of 2025 plan to enroll in two- or four-year colleges, universities, and technical schools this coming year. Each high school names a AAA Arts, Academics, and Athletics, and an Excel student for the Minnesota State High School League each year, and so two students for each of these awards go forward from our schools to region and state recognition. Seniors earned over $500,000 in scholarships provided by local and community donors this year. Of course, there are many, many other scholarships that were offered to our graduates by post-secondary institutions. Returning graduates report that they are so well-prepared for post-secondary education, well beyond many others they encounter in post-secondary. Academics are thriving in our high schools, and the elementary and middle schools who have prepared our students so well also deserve congratulations. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Bill Blattheim, Assistant Principal at Apple Valley High School, will talk about the arts.
Thank you, Polly. Good evening, everybody. Chairperson Johnson, board members, Superintendent Bolsoni. As Polly said, I'm Bill Blattheim, Assistant Principal at Apple Valley High School, and I want to talk about just arts programming in our district, and as Eric said, we're mostly talking about high schools here. And Superintendent Bolsoni recognized that there's a picture of an ayabostic up there on our slideshow. She's had a week where she went from being named a triple-threat award winner at the Hennepin Theater Showcase Event to being a national champion in Des Moines on Friday, coming back to Apple Valley on Saturday, grabbing her things, getting on a plane. She's in New York right now for an all-expenses-paid experience as part of that triple-threat, and that's an experience that she gets, one, because of her hard work and talent, but also because of the opportunities that so many people in this district work so hard to provide. The arts in our community are vibrant and visible. We did some math. It's hard to know, because we sell tickets to some events, other events, like choir and band concerts are free, but at my best estimate, we had over 40,000 attendees at choir, band concerts, musical theater, plays, all of the different things that we do just at our high schools alone. That doesn't count our middle school events, our elementary band concerts, and when you think about the members of our community, for many of them, this is the reason that they might come in our doors one or two times a year. They might come to see a Broadway, a Bravo, an onstage, an encore, something like that, and that this is how they get exposed to the work of our schools, to what our students are doing, what our teachers are doing, and this is what they see. And I often think that some of our best work we do when it comes to community relations as a district is the free senior citizens previews that we do, and I know I've seen many of you at those previews, like for Broadway at Apple Valley, and I always speak before those happen, and I always talk to our community members about, "This is your opportunity to see what students are doing," because I think when you're removed from our schools, sometimes it's so easy to just say, "Oh, you know, kids these days." And I always do some variant on a speech where I say, "You know, it's really easy to say that," but when you're done seeing this here today, you're gonna walk out and go, "Wow, kids these days." Right? Like, it's a very public thing, and it's a chance for our community to see the good work that our schools are doing, and so I think that's a big thing, that 40,000 number sticks out to me. It's really hard to estimate local and national recognition, because there's so many of them. You've met so many of them. I said 100-plus on the slide, but you heard Superintendent Bolsoni talk about them tonight. You've met our mock-trial state champions, our speech state champions, DECA state national qualifiers, 40-plus all-state musicians, nationally-recognized marching bands, participants in the Spotlight Showcase, and just at NSDA's this week, and I'm blurring the lines a little bit, sorry, Pete, between arts and activities, but of the top 14 in the 11 main events at NSDA's, 10 of them were from District 196. That doesn't sound like a lot, but that's 6% of all the available semifinal spots came from one district right here, and last time I checked, our district isn't 6% of all of the students in the United States. Like, we have a little bit fewer than that, right? So we're taking up more than our fair share, and that's the students, like I said, working hard. That's also all the teachers, the coaches, the support, and that support comes right up from here, the resources and the time and the energy we spend as a community and a district to put behind these events to make them happen. And lastly, there's a number up there about the number of students that are involved in arts programs in our high school, but the point I want to make is that the arts, they create enriching student experiences. And I want to say, our faculty and staff are always looking for new opportunities. They're always looking for new ways to get students involved. They look, I've worked with so many faculty and staff members who look at it and say, "You know, when I look at the number of students that are involved in musical theater or band, I don't always see the representation that is in this school. How can we work to make that better? Here are some things we're gonna do to try and make this a welcoming event and create an array of experiences for people who have never tried out for a play before, or for people who are ready for that next level, like the Hennepin Spotlight Showcase." Our people work so hard to try and make sure that our arts program is accessible to everybody. They bring students into contact with local and national artists and professionals, and being a part of an arts program creates a core memory for a student. As an alumnus myself of District 196 in Apple Valley High School, I can tell you, the best memory I have of high school is being in Broadway, and that will never change. That's always been my best memory, and all the years I've worked at the school, that's still my favorite thing. And lastly, the point I just want to make about arts programming, and Matt Percival can make the same point about athletics, but it's so true. It extends the learning beyond the classroom, and it teaches students that there are no shortcuts. Time was, we would be assigned a five-page essay in our English classes in high school, and there wasn't a shortcut for that. There's a shortcut for that now, right? And we're wrestling with that, but there is no ChatGPT for learning how to play an etude on your trumpet. There's no ChatGPT for learning your lines in a play, for learning your steps of choreography. This is a place where you still have to take a talent, take a passion, nurture it, develop it, work hard, and you see how that hard work develops from point A to point B, and there's no shortcut, there's no way around it. So it creates those core skills that our students need to be able to go out in the world and be difference-makers once they leave our schools and go out into whatever's next. So those are just some points that I wanted to make about arts. Next, I want to invite Matt Percival, the Assistant Principal Athletic Director at Eastview, to talk about athletics.
Good evening. As Bill said, my name is Matt Percival, the Assistant Principal for Cookham Athletics at Eastview High School. Just a few of the brief highlights about athletics in our district. Starting off with the fact that we have over 500 coaches across our district who work with our high school athletes alone. As member schools of the Minnesota State High School League, all of those coaches are trained in the inside-out philosophy, which is also known as education-based or purpose-based sports and activities. The idea being that sports in our schools don't just teach athletic skills, but they teach lifelong skills and values as well. The goal in our sports has always been and continues to be all about performance outcomes, but it's also the idea that they don't just teach us that, but they teach us about skills, values that last for a lifetime. So as we look at those goals of winning a game, running a certain time, scoring so many points, et cetera, the greater purpose is really much bigger. It truly is about that human growth and development of each student focused around one of the core values of each program that aligns so well with our district's mission. So now that you know the why, here's a little bit of the what from District 196. Here in our district, we offer 37 different Minnesota State High School League sports. District-wide, that's approximately 42% of our kids participated in one or more of those High School League activities at the high school level this past year. We in Minnesota, as well as throughout District 196, continue to expand those opportunities, much similar to what you heard here earlier this evening, for our students. Here are three of the most recent examples from this past year. Boys volleyball, as you heard earlier tonight, this was the first year of a Minnesota State High School League sanctioned opportunity. There were over 80 teams plus statewide, but as Coach Danelle said, not every district chose to sponsor it. Here in 196, all four of our high schools had at least three different levels of participation this year for students to participate. Girls wrestling was a second one, where the High School League doubled the number of girls-only events this past year, and the number of female participants across our state continues to grow exponentially. Next year, they're going to expand the girls' state tournament bracket to 16 individuals per weight class to mirror the boys, with a continued push to make it a separate sanctioned sport as well. Finally, in this past year was the addition of girls' flag football. This was the first year of a club offering with funding and organizational support coming from the National Football League and specifically from the Minnesota Vikings. All four of our district schools offered teams, had great turnouts of participation, and as a club sport, those numbers are currently not included in the numbers that we share about High School League participation, so as you can tell, those numbers continue to grow. The one thing that was very evident, lots of smiles, improvement each week, and obviously, this league will continue to expand. Not only do our students of District 196 participate at high rates, but quite simply, no district in the state of Minnesota is as successful as ours when it comes to athletic performance. District 196 was represented in 33 of the 37 Minnesota State High School League state tournament offerings in this past year, highlighted by our own Dakota Hawks Adaptive Athletes, who took home three state championships in just this past year. In addition to those accomplishments, District 196 teams claimed 11 different South Suburban Conference Championships, 22 different team section championships, and 113 of our graduating seniors have committed to compete in collegiate athletics. The success for our athletes was not just limited to the athletic field, as several different teams from all four high schools were recognized as their academic gold team or had individuals receive top academic all-state honors. Collectively, our most involved students have proven to have great success in the classroom as well. So what's next in athletics? Well, if you drive around the district, you will see lots of construction, included in that are the Activity Center additions, to which we can only simply say thank you to the board for their support and the community for making those happen, for those continued growth of opportunities that we look forward to. In conclusion, on the athletics front, stats and numbers are certainly impressive, but they'll soon be forgotten, and medals and plaques will end up in a storage container after a grad party, but those memories and life lessons that students in 196 have learned through their participation in athletics will never be forgotten. Next up is Principal from Rosemont High School, Pete Roback, on district activities.
Thank you, Matt. I'm here to speak on the role and impact of student activities in District 196. In the framework of academics, arts, and athletics, activities is often referred to as the fourth A, but it plays a critical and often underestimated role in shaping a well-rounded high school experience. Whether categorized alongside the arts or recognized independently, student activities contribute significantly to students' sense of belonging, connection to school, and the development of meaningful relationships with both peers and staff. What defines an activity? Student activities encompass a wide variety of clubs, programs, groups, and teams that are not necessarily governed by the Minnesota State High School League for Athletics and do not fall strictly within the A of Visual and Performing Arts. Examples range from student-led interest clubs like Best Buddies, Baking Club, into competitive programs such as Speech and Debate, DECA, Ultimate Frisbee, and Quiz Bowl. Leadership and student empowerment, one of the most powerful aspects of the activities program is the opportunity for student leadership. If a club does not currently exist, students are encouraged to propose and create one. Each high school in District 196 has a defined process in place for students to submit a proposal, articulate the club's potential impact on the school community, and number three, secure a staff member to serve as an advisor. Recent student-led club initiatives include the Goodwill Club, Olympic Weightlifting Club, Aviation Club, and one of my favorites, the Hack Club, which is a coding club advised by a teacher of technology forensics. Affinity Clubs, building belonging and cultural awareness. All District 196 high schools support affinity clubs, which serve as safe, empowering spaces for students to build community and celebrate identity. These clubs often lead service projects, organize outreach efforts, and host cultural celebration events for students and families. Academic and competitive activities. Several activities enhance students' academic experience while providing opportunities to compete at the local, state, and national levels. Such examples may include Science Olympiad, Quiz Bowl, Math Team, Speech and Debate, Robotics, BPA, which is Business Professionals of America, and DECA. Growing participation and achievement. Participation in student-led clubs and activities continues to rise across all District 196 high schools. As you can see from the slide, participation numbers are strong, as evident from competitive activities that are consistent at all four of the 196 comprehensive high schools. Currently, in the '24-'25 school year, over 200 students participated in debate district-wide, over 262 students participated in speech, over 200 students in robotics, and over 300 students in either BPA or DECA. Our students regularly demonstrate excellence in leadership with individual and team achievements at competitions that reflect the strong culture of engagement and support throughout the entire district. As you can see, the AAA philosophy is alive and well in District 196. To close our presentation, I direct your attention to the screen, where a brief video will be played that summarizes our students' experiences and opportunities. Thank you. That video just gives me the chills. It's excellent. Any questions or comments you'd like to make for the team?
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
No, you go first.
Oh, it's just amazing what happens in 196. It doesn't matter, and when they do at Rosemont High School, and all the high schools do that at graduation, they have kids stand up. "Are you involved in a sport? Are you involved in an F?" And pretty soon, he's got the whole class standing, and those are kids that have been involved in something else. And like was said, success in those things leads to success in classrooms, because it binds that you're part of our team. So congratulations to everybody that runs that. Congratulations to students, and congratulations to this community for putting and for supporting that kind of stuff for our kids. Congratulations, and thank you to the Rosemont Police, and other places probably do that too, as they escort too, as they escort the kids that are going to state tournaments out of town with the police cars. I told the kids, the golf guys here, I said, "Well, let's hope that's the only thing you ever get escorted out of town with." But they kind of looked at me like, "What?" But congratulations, and we should really give ourselves a pat on the back for what we have built in District 196 and how students take care and are involved. So thank you, everyone.
Anna?
I'm speechless. My heart is just full right now, and I think of, I'm just so proud to be, I'm proud that I get to be up here witnessing the amazing things that the administrators, the staff, the leadership, and our students are able to do in this district. And the people behind it too, I think about that production with the communications and the, just astounding. It's hard for me to believe that this is a school district for K-12 or pre-K-12, but not like some higher education institution. This is something I would expect to see at a collegiate level. And yet, we can provide this here for our students in, in Rosemont, Appleby, Eagan, and you know, some of the other surrounding communities, and I just think how fortunate my family, my, my family was when we moved here. I appreciate that they were able, my kids were able to receive such an amazing opportunities here, and it's wonderful to see that, that tradition is, is going to continue. I'm inspired by the principals that came up here. Thank you so much. It reminds, it's a good reminder every time I come, how it's a privilege to be a school board member and why it's a privilege, and thank you for constantly under your leadership, Michael, and, and the leaders that are here to remind us what our purposes, what our goals are, what our values are. And I appreciate every time you come up here and you remind us, and I think that's important, that that's our North Star. It's never just about money, it's never just about numbers or participants. It is about the possibilities and, and a better future for not just our kids, but their kids as well. And so, we're leaving a legacy that will far outlast our time on this earth, and I'm so proud to be part of that.
Catherine?
Just to add to what Anna was saying, one of the coolest things, and it wasn't in this video, but I'm a, I'm a mom of really young kids, so in elementary school. And there are so many programs that take those high schoolers that were in those videos and bring them down to the elementary level, and the impact that that has on the younger kids that are coming through the district is really just amazing. And I think it goes both ways, because I see the high schoolers and they're very excited to be with these younger kids, but that kind of intergenerational drive to have them involved in these activities is so special and has such an impact that it, it's that legacy that continues through the district. So you know, that video was exciting, and I'm excited to just see it continue with the, the younger kids that are coming through too. So thank you for all of that very important work.
Any questions or comments?
I'll just really, really short. I'll just say, not that it's a competition, but, to match our superintendent's level of enthusiasm is, is a high bar, and you all just, you all just got it. So I just, I think that enthusiasm actually just means the world. So you know, that's how we inspire our students, so thank you.
I just have one thing to say, that I love how attention and support is balanced among the four As, that students, no matter what their interest, they're able to find their place, and they're able to find their group and their people. And I think that's important, given the number of students that we have, and I just, I think it's amazing how well we balance that, so thank you.
I just had to say that, gosh, I don't know whose idea this was to have this report presented in this format, but it was a good idea. I loved having the diverse group of administrators all with personal connections to each one of our As or As pluses maybe, come and present a little bit about this, and it's, I echo what every single board member here just said too, is that, gosh, we, we are fortunate enough to serve and live in an amazing school district, and that is only possible by the people that serve it. So thank you, and thank everyone who makes these activities possible. Thank you to Michael for, under your leadership, for continuing that philosophy. And I do just have one question, but it's kind of a rhetorical question, I don't even want an answer. But I would just say, with everyone here today, think about what we can do as board members to continue to support that AAA philosophy, because we want to hear about it. Bring those ideas up to Michael. Like for instance, we were so fortunate to congratulate the boys volleyball team today. First year, we've been able to do that. And I have actually talked to boys volleyball players that couldn't compete because their boards weren't supportive this year. And that's, and I'm so glad that our board was supportive of that, so we could give our students that opportunity. So I just ask if there are other opportunities where we can support, we want to hear about those, because we love this, we want to continue. This is amazing, and we just want to continue to elevate. Jackie?
One thing that has always gets my heart is the number of coaches who come back. They were, they were graduates of 196, they went and got their degrees, they come back, they're teachers and they're coaches. The Hatleys are too, that are graduates from the district. So it's always kind of nice that you see that legacy, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right. Next, I would like to welcome Jerry Sorensen and Stephen Belkamp to the podium to go over our assessment reports, spring benchmark, and FastBridge data. And I'm sorry you have to talk about data after that presentation, but I mean, you've got us engaged, I promise.
I was going to say out loud that you're following that wonderful presentation up with a presentation on universal screening data. So buckle up.
Going to be great.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. Tonight, we are here to share an update on our academic data from this school year and to highlight how we are developing and refining our process for using data from FastBridge, our new universal screening tool for literacy and math. This presentation is informational only, so no action is required at this time. And here's what we'll be covering. We will begin with a brief review of the framework that guides planning and continuous improvement efforts. Next, we'll share our current FastBridge universal screening data organized through the lens of that framework. And then finally, we'll highlight the actions we're taking to, taking in response to the data to support student learning and instructional effectiveness. We'll start by reviewing our framework. So everything starts and revolves around our strategic roadmap and our strategic priorities. Tonight, the focus on the strategic priority related to, tonight, the focus is on the strategic priority related to achievement. Strengthening and aligning curriculum and instructional practices across all classrooms to improve student outcomes and staff efficacy. By focusing on our strategic roadmap, we are ensuring our time, effort, and resources are tied to the most important priorities. From there, our strategic priorities flow into our three-year operational plan, and these are the things that we intentionally focus our time and effort on. One item on that plan that is relevant to this topic is a universal screener for literacy and math to support data-driven decision-making. I'm excited to introduce the Coordinator of Research, Analytics, and Assessment, Stephen Belkamp, who will continue to share out our spring data this evening.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Bolsoni, it's good to see you all. Again, my name is Stephen Kemp. Professor Belkamp, I am the incoming Coordinator of Research, Assessment, and Analytics for our district. So on the slide you see is our, is two of our district goals related to MCA proficiency. They're featured on our vision card, and they directly align with our operational plan. The MCA, that's our Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, is a state accountability test we use to evaluate how well our instructional programming aligns with the Minnesota academic standards in literacy and math. These goals are both ambitious and attainable, reflecting our district's commitment to continuous improvement and to ensure that more students are meeting and/or exceeding grade-level expectations in core academic areas. MCA results are publicly available in late August. So why am I starting the presentation with our district goals? So we are actively developing and refining our process for using FastBridge universal screening to monitor progress towards our district goals on the MCA. As you may recall, universal screening really helps us do two things. At a district level, it really helps us assess the effectiveness of our Tier One or of our core instruction, so that's a system measure. And more locally, or at like the teacher level, it helps teachers identify students who may be at risk and may need additional support. As Jeremy said, we have, this is our second year in the adoption of FastBridge as a universal screener. This is the second year implementing it for literacy in K-6, and it's our first year implementing it for math at the K-6 level. FastBridge is an evidence-based screener, and it has demonstrated strong accuracy in predicting MCA proficiency. So because of this strong correlation with predicting MCAs, we are confident in using FastBridge to guide instructional decisions and interventions. It's important to highlight that this represents a new approach for our district. A key difference is that FastBridge universal screening is significantly more predictive of MCA proficiency than any other assessment tool we've used in the past. We are phasing in the use of FastBridge. I kind of just said, hey, second year of literacy, first year of, of math at the elementary level, while also, and here's the important part, while also continuing to build a process for analyzing and responding to the data after each benchmarking period. And when I mean benchmarking period, we administer it three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. So with that introduction, now let's get to the, some of the data. We're going to first start with literacy, so district-wide literacy data. On this slide, you'll see a comparison of MCA reading proficiency and FastBridge screening results. So the blue bar on the left side of your screen represents spring 2024, so that's last year's MCA reading proficiency. The orange bars reflect our FastBridge universal screening results throughout this school year. So notice in fall, fifty-eight point five percent of our students were proficient, according to FastBridge, meaning they were on track to be proficient by the spring. In winter, we did see a dip to down to fifty-five point two percent. This decline is not unexpected, and it likely reflects the natural challenges that come with the early stages of implementing new literacy curriculum that you've likely heard a lot about this school year. So during the period, think about it, teachers are learning and refining new instructional practices. Students are adjusting to unfamiliar routines and expectations, and our schools are working to ensure the necessary resources. Training, materials, and support systems are fully in place. These factors can temporarily impact student outcomes before stronger gains emerge. And then you'll notice the third orange bar in spring, proficiency rebounded a bit to fifty-six point eight percent, indicating that our instructional adjustments and growing teacher familiarity with the new curriculum is beginning to stabilize student performance. Also note about FastBridge benchmarking periods, so each benchmark assessment is designed to increase the complexity across the school year, so the winter and then the spring assessments introduce more rigorous content than in the fall. This progression aligns with expected student growth and allows us to use the results not only to monitor progress, but also to inform adjustments to our curriculum scope, sequence, and pacing to better beat student needs. And then that last bar, well, it's missing right now. So the 2025 MCA reading results are currently embargoed by the Minnesota Department of Ed, and they'll be publicly released in late August. But remember how I said, hey, FastBridge is closely aligned with MCA reading results? This will further reinforce when those results be available in late August to you. The next slide, as I said earlier, second year of literacy, FastBridge screening at the elementary level, and it provides us with a really valuable opportunity to compare spring performance year over year. So this chart, the blue is the spring 2024, so last year, and the orange is spring 2025, FastBridge literacy proficiency levels by the seven grade levels, so K through six. So encouragingly, as we look year over year, we're seeing growth, higher proficiency levels in five out of our seven grade levels. I'll remark that grade five saw really exceptional significant growth over a ten percentage-point increase. These data-driven insights are instrumental in helping our Instruction and Achievement Department refine curriculum pacing and adjust content to better align with student needs at each grade level. By analyzing these trends, we're able to make more targeted and effective instructional decisions, decisions, excuse me, that support continued student growth. As we move to math now, so this slide presents our district-wide math data using a very similar format you just saw with literacy. So the blue bar on the left is last year, so spring 2024, MCA math proficiency, and the orange bars represent this year's FastBridge universal screening, fall, winter, and spring from this year. So in fall, we saw a really strong start, fifty-eight point six percent of our students were showing proficiency. That was already surpassing our year-end goal. And in the winter, it, we saw continued growth, up to fifty-nine point six. Keep in mind, we implemented new math curriculum as well this year at the elementary level. So we did see a dip this spring down to fifty-six point two percent. And this decline, decline is likely influenced by multiple factors, including the early stages of implementing our new math curriculum at the elementary level. During these curriculum transitions, teachers are learning and applying new instructional practices. Students are adjusting unfamiliar, adjusting to unfamiliar content and expectations, and our schools are aligning to pacing and support systems. As, as I talked about with literacy, the FastBridge benchmark assessments are intentionally designed to increase rigor from fall to winter to spring, so those spring benchmarks present more complex ideas and content than those in the fall and winter. The data allows us to enter, identify areas for instructional adjustment, provide targeted professional development, and make informed decisions about curriculum pacing and support to strengthen student outcomes. The last slide with some data here, again, this was our first year with FastBridge math universal screening at the elementary level. So much of our work is focused this year on learning how the tool functions and how to meaningfully interpret and respond to the data it provides. So this chart, you can see K through six, so the seven grade levels. Notice, it's our first year, so there, again, there's only one year shown on here. Even in this, this early stage, we're seeing encouraging signs with higher proficiency rates at several grade levels if we look back to previous year MCA results. These differences are helping the Instruction and Achievement Department make informed, data-driven adjustments to curriculum pacing and instructional content. This work is a key part of really a broader effort to make, to build a more research-based, responsive system that supports student growth in mathematics across all of our grade levels. As we continue to use FastBridge year after year, the data will become increasingly more valuable, not only for tracking individual student growth, but also for identifying district-wide trends year over year, evaluating the effectiveness of instructional strategies, and monitoring the impact of curriculum or intervention adjustments. This longitudinal data will empower us to make informed, data-driven decisions about resource allocation, professional development, and instructional planning to more effectively support student achievement in mathematics across grade levels. So really, as I start thinking about our strategic priority we highlighted was achievement, but notice there's a lot of resource implications and use of it. So in closing, as I move to this last slide, we're excited to continue the work of implementing our curriculum with fidelity and with focus. The results from our universal screening, along with other key data points and data sources, provide insights into what aspects of our curriculum are working well and where there might be gaps. These insights help us make informed adjustments to curriculum pacing and content, so that's our first bullet point as we look towards the next year. Our Instruction and Achievement Department commit, is committed to identifying and addressing these gaps to ensure every student receives high-quality education. And now that universal screening is established, this is where I'm most excited. Our next step is to equip teachers with clear, effective data protocols. So these protocols will streamline how teachers interpret data, helping them to know what to look for, how to analyze it, and then here's the most important part, how to act on it. By fostering consistency, saving time, and encouraging collaboration, data protocols empower educators to make targeted, data-driven decisions that directly improve student outcomes. And the third bullet point here is, as we're scaling up the implementation of FastBridge literacy and math screening, we are expanding it to we are expanding it to include all students' grades K-10 next year. We're excited to support the learning for teachers in grades seven to 10 next year who have, who are using, who are going to be using Fastbridge for the first time. So in closing, the adoption of Fastbridge universal screening tool and the data it provides allows us to do a few things. First, provide our district with a consistent, system-wide view of student learning. We have never had that before with a single tool, not to mention a tool that is research-based and highly aligned to standards. It will also help us to highlight strengths and gaps in student learning and instructional practices. And lastly, the data obtained from Fastbridge helps to support a proactive and responsive, responsive system of support. So thank you for listening. Notice there was not as much data as you thought. It was really more about the process of how we are going to use it and currently are using it. So I'll pass it back over to our Director of Elementary Ed, Jeremy, to see if there's any questions. So thank you for your time.
At this, are you done, Director Swarrenson?
Yep.
Okay. At this time, I just, I didn't want to interrupt you, I had something else to add. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members. Leah.
Just gonna say, Stephen, you all, I also appreciated your enthusiasm. That was also evident.
We all have the things we're passionate about. Jackie.
Will you be back in August when the MCAs come back and, and show us where we're? I would imagine you have a bigger report of where we are and where we're.
Absolutely. They become public late August, so I can't commit right to August. But when we get those, we will certainly come back and report those out. And I think our plan is to continually report out, you know, throughout the year how we're doing as with Fastbridge and MCAs.
I know, I was at the Curriculum Advisory Council meeting last month, and we were looking at some, and teachers must have had some kind of idea of where they thought their kids were going to be. And so they're looking at, you know, well, I could be here, and I think mine are here. And a good, a good thing to share with teachers and the community members who are on that committee. So thank you.
I'm gonna go to Catherine. Both raise your hand at the same time.
I wanted to just say, I was excited about the first video, but I also am just as excited about the data as you are. And I'm really excited about the focus on how we use it to act and how we use it to change things. And this immediate feedback that, that you'll be able to provide teachers and then that really important piece of teaching teachers how to use the data, because we are not all as excited about it, and mostly it's because people get scared by data. So this feels just so approachable and really supportive. And so I love the data to action that is seen in this. So I am very excited and very excited to see next year how we then use this. So great. And, and I appreciate how well you explain the data, because it is hard to explain what's going on and to guide people to the ups and the downs and why we're seeing it. So you've done a really good job with, you know, being data-literate and bringing us all along. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anna.
Yes, to my colleagues over here. And I did have a couple of questions, just because I'm curious. How many other districts are using Fastbridge? I know this is probably a question you've already answered, but if I'm thinking about with, not the people that the districts we compete with, but our surrounding area, but how many other districts?
It's a good, it's a good question. I don't know the exact answer, but Fastbridge is one of the state-approved screeners with Read Act. And there's only, I think, two or three.
Okay.
So quite a few districts. I can tell you that a number of, Fastbridge has been around for about ten to fifteen years. And there are a number of districts that are using it. It's a really good tool, because it's, it's normed, it's reliable, so it's, it's measuring what it's supposed to measure, and it's valid. So it's exciting. So a lot of districts are using it, which I think will benefit us as a state, because we can work with each other and collaborate a little bit differently. We're excited about kind of the K-10 movement next year. To have common data across K-10 is super exciting and not something we've ever had before.
My second question, and, and pardon my ignorance around this, but how, so, I'm looking at some of the areas where students need more support. And so I'm thinking about special ed. How does, how does special ed use this as a tool? Are there additional, like, there are specific resources? How do we capture that? I know we capture that data. But I, it's nice to see this overall, like, for every student. But I'm also interested, as you know. You know, the students that need more support, I'm always, I always like to know where are they at? And, and I'd like to see, you know, how we are helping them improve.
Sure. I think that's a really good question, too, so I appreciate it. What we showed was a high-level picture of the data here. I think in some of our previous special board meetings where we were able to break it down by building or by classroom, schools have the ability to do that, and they do do that. So all of our students take the screener. And then students who show some sort of risk, they get something additional assessment called a diagnostic that really narrows in on what their specific needs are. And so speaking to that, then we identify what a kid's needs are and build a plan specific to them to support them.
Thank you. I, I know you've covered this before. I, I was absent for a couple of those. I was sick. So I, thank you for reiterating that.
It's, it's a great question, and it's complicated, and we're still building that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Robin.
My question is, I'll just speak loud, oh, there it goes. My question is, you're going to be rolling it out for seven through 10 next year. And is it stopping at 10th grade because that's when they last take the MCA? Or why are we not tracking our students through 12th grade?
Good insight. So MCA reading at the high school level is 10th grade. So that is, I don't know if appropriate stopping point is, is, is fair to say. But I would say we are still absolutely in a multi-year implementation phase. We haven't universally screened our students in literacy and math consistently at the high school level in my 12 years in the district, as far as I know. And so it is a multi, multi-tiered implementation of. There's a lot of training involved with staff, because we don't want to simply administer assessment and then do nothing with it. So it's, it's planning for how can we equip teachers to, as you, as you all pointed out, using the data is the most important part.
And I think one additional, one additional piece to that is part of the Read Act, there is a requirement for the literacy side of this to identify students. I think it's grades four through 12 with a screener. So for literacy, we will be eventually moving that way, because it's a state requirement. And then the idea is, any student who's not on track, we, we give them a diagnostic to identify their specific needs. So that's something that will be new in grades four through 10. That screener will then play into diagnostic for a number of students and then develop a specific plan to help support them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here. I just wanted to add to, I get, sometimes I get nervous with data presentations, because I don't know if they'll tick one of my pet peeves or not. One of my pet peeves around data is data for data's sake, right? We measured it, we measured it, we're done. And I'm, and I'm like, you have to have a reason why you measured it, and you have to have an action depending on what you saw. And I heard a lot of that tonight about steps that you'll take and why we do it. I loved, Catherine, you mentioned the guide for teachers, people that might not be as data-literate, but what do you do if you're seeing this? What do you do if you're seeing that? I absolutely love that. And one thing that is always in the back of my head, I hear comments a lot. I think some pet peeves I've also heard from teachers is we do spend a lot of time assessing, right? That's, and that's important. And we want to make sure we're getting a return on investment for that. And I really heard that tonight, which was awesome to hear. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to welcome Janet Swichakowski to the podium to go over our 2025 Legislative Session Report.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, School Board members, Superintendent Balsone. I have some guests joining me as well, members of our Legislative Advisory Council. This report reflects on our legislative priorities and the legislative session. The people joining me are Ryan Lyric, Chaz McCready, and Adam Jorgensen. And we also have more members of our Legislative Advisory Council in the audience. We had a meeting scheduled for May 28th and needed to postpone that meeting. So we met earlier this evening with the conclusion of the legislative session. In District 196, we have a strong Legislative Advisory Council that really engages members of our community and members of our staff in understanding the issues in the district and the important role the legislative branch plays as well. It is difficult to speak tonight about the legislative session following the senseless assassination of Speaker Emeritus Melissa Hortman and her husband Mark, and the shooting of Senator John Hoffman and his wife, Yvette. In our work with the legislature, we have the opportunity to meet with and talk with legislative legislators across the political spectrum, and we see them as people, hard-working, dedicated, public servants who want the best for our children and our state. The events of the last few weeks have shaken our state. This was a long and difficult session that required dialogue and compromise. It took selfless leadership to reach agreement. And it's devastating that in the end, Speaker Emeritus Hortman and her husband gave their lives in service to the people of Minnesota. But we want to remember the lasting impact that their service had. As I said, in District 196, we have an involved legislative council. In addition to discussing priorities, communicating with our legislators, we also have visited the Capitol, had one-on-one meetings with our legislators, and we have always been warmly received by both sides of the aisle. Because education is a bipartisan issue that transcends any one person or one community. Public education is the foundation of our democracy, and there is agreement that we want and need a well-educated citizenry for our society. I'd like to invite Ryan Lyric to talk a little bit about our, some of our Legislative Advisory Council activities.
Hello, School Board, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Balsone. My name is Ryan Lyric. I'm an Eagan resident. I am a former District 196 graduate, and I teach on the amazing fifth-grade team at Westview Elementary. It was fun talking about budget and funding and legislation. It was really cool to see not only the importance on academics, but also athletics and arts. A former teacher, my name is Sir Byer, currently still teaches there. And he was very passionate about his subject, but really cared deeply about our students. And so I always strive to tell my fifth graders each year before we go to 196 things, what impact it made on me. It's fun to introduce him to the students and try to strive to be like him each day. I'm a member of the Legislative Advisory Council, representing the Equity Advisory Council. As a reminder, our Legislative Advisory Council is made up of representatives from each of our other district advisory councils, along with seven citizens-at-large and our collective bargaining teams. This allows us a broad view of needs, issues, and perspectives across the district, and is very important, because it makes a major impact on the students I teach. This year was a difficult session. The forecast is projecting the state deficits in the 2028-29 biennium and the regular session budget targets. The governor proposed cuts, the House proposed a modest increase, and the Senate proposed a zero percent increase in $557 million in cuts in 2028-2029. There was a special session, and there were no changes to the 26-27 biennium. But the Education Finance Committee was tasked with developing a budget that included a $420 million reduction for the 28-29 biennium. I'm gonna pass it back for a few more updates.
So as we look at some of the legislative priorities that we had as a district that the board approved, one of the most important is the funding formula, the general education formula. It's important that the legislature maintained linking the funding formula to inflation moving forward. So our general education formula will increase by 2.74% for fiscal year '26 and will increase again between 2% and 3% for fiscal year '27. This is an important priority, because it's a result of more than probably 15 or 20 years of advocacy work that came to fruition in 2023 legislative session. Another item that was a key priority for our district was a Hold Harmless Clause for one-time, for compensatory funding. In '23-'24, they provided that one-time Hold Harmless Clause. And again, for '26, they will provide the one-time Hold Harmless Clause. The third priority, I was looking at unemployment aid. This was a key component of the '23 legislative session, providing unemployment insurance benefits for hourly employees in schools. The funding that was provided in '23 was due to run out this year. The legislature found another allocated $100 million or appropriated $100 million to continue that through fiscal year '27. There are difficult times ahead with our state legislature and our state budgets. Not all of our priorities could be realized, and we will be looking at some cuts. The first is that, not this biennium, but in '28-'29, the legislature will need to find $250 million in reductions for special education. I'll talk about that more in a moment. Special education transportation reimbursement aid will decrease to 95% of the expenses for fiscal year '26 and 90% in fiscal year '27. Statewide, this is a $43 million reduction. Our best estimate for District 196 is somewhere between 600 and 700, 600 and 800,000. Student support personnel aid will also be reduced, 28.7 million in District 196. That's a reduction of 18.68 per pupil, adjusted pupil unit. And we're estimating that at about 560 million, thousand for a reduction. School library aid will also be reduced. That, we're estimating at about 180,000. And the teacher pipeline grants program will also be reduced. Our grants are currently funded through 2030. So that would, may not impact us as hard as districts that haven't yet applied for grants for the teacher pipeline. We do, when you add it all together, we also have the compensatory Hold Harmless, which was a critical priority I mentioned on the prior slide. That will be a gain or a plus of about 1.2 million. So if we look at the totality of our budget that you'll hear about in a little while from the Finance Department, the reductions that we're looking at are just about 300,000. Another critical factor is that the Free Meals for All program will be having a reduction in funding, lowering meals from, state reimbursement from 12.5 cents to 6.25 cents per meal, beginning in fiscal year '28. Again, that is not an immediate reduction. That is in the next biennium. The Blue Ribbon Commission on Special Education Funding will be, have a challenge. Special education funding is one of the areas that has had the greatest growth since 2023, and it has also had the greatest growth in the number of students served. That is a growing need in our state. This commission will be appointed to identify 250 million in special education cuts by, for the next biennium. In my recollection, every year, or not every year, but every governor has appointed a commission to study education funding and to make recommendations to fix our formula. Every commission comes up with recommendations, and they are challenged to have the recommendations implemented. So we have many commission reports that are not fully enacted. There's a clause. There's a clause in this legislation that says if this commission does not identify the cuts that are needed for special education, the Commissioner of Education must. So these are cuts that will be realized in our special education programs through the state of Minnesota. This commission is scheduled, or is tasked with identifying an action plan for transforming special education services while maintaining a free and appropriate public education for students with disabilities. This is an important priority that really hits home for many of our, members of our Legislative Action Committee as well. In addition to the Blue Ribbon Commission on Special Education, there will also be working groups to address compensatory revenue on a long-term basis, seclusion, transportation, and developmental delay age limits. I'd like to invite Adam Jorgensen to talk about a couple of other policy provisions.
Hi, good evening. Adam Wanten-Margaret, Deputy General Counsel. Just wanted to talk briefly about a few of the highlights from some other changes that did get through the legislature here. Attendance tracking, there were a few different efforts to sort of modernize some of the attendance provisions. Believe it or not, there was a provision that says one way that parents can report excused absences is by contacting any individual school board member. How about that? There's also a clause that says a school board clerk or another school board member should be keeping records of all student absences, so I hope you have those ready to go. But I'm pleased to report that you're relieved of those duties, that they did take that out and update it so that those are directed to the school principals or other appropriate staff who manage attendance at schools. There were a couple other changes in terms of, or clarifications in terms of how attendance is reported, and some language about reporting to the county. At the beginning of new school years, students who don't report, who were previously enrolled and who we didn't have any notice of them enrolling elsewhere. So a few tweaks there, nothing too momentous, but cleaned up some of the outdated language there. School calendars, this won't affect us too much, but schools' years can start before Labor Day in 2026 and '27. September 1st is the cutoff for that, but there's some late Labor Days coming up, so they adjusted it so that schools can start before then. We have, there's also a construction exemption where you can start earlier if you have big construction projects going. So us and most other big districts usually have something in place there, so we will be starting earlier under that exemption, but this does lock that in further. Opiate antagonist in high schools, this is a change that allows school districts to put something in place where high school students would have the ability to possess and administer an opiate antagonist to another student in the case of an opioid overdose emergency. That's not mandatory, but it's something that school districts are allowed to implement, so that's something that our Health Services Coordinator may be exploring and how and whether to implement some of that. School board authority for experiential learning programs, this just basically says that if the board approves some kind of experiential or applied learning program, some kind of activity in a non-traditional setting, MDE can't override that or deny it. So that's helpful from a local control perspective, that the board gets that authority. Directory data changes, I think Jill Coyle mentioned this last week in the context of our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, that parent contact information can no longer be designated as directory information, and so that will not be something that can be public data. There are still some exceptions to that, particularly health and safety emergencies, but in general, that won't be public information. The parental consent really stated a DED. DED is the Department of Employment and Economic Development. That's just for, there was an exception where you could release that contact information for parents of students receiving special education services in a post-secondary transition capacity for the purpose of coordinating some of those employment programs. It just says it's, that's not an exception to that. Parents still need to provide that consent before you share that information. Some new REDACT training requirements, I won't get into the weeds on that, but a few different, you know, additions or tweaks to that regarding paraprofessionals and unlicensed staff, some requirements for teachers moving into the state who haven't had the training. Some of the training requirements have been folded into the licensure requirements for tier one, two, and three teachers. So a few different adjustments there that we'll be on top of. And then, open meeting law change, y'all might have heard about this, but previously, we couldn't have board members appear remotely unless we publicized where they were going to be and made that open to the public. So whether that was your house or a hotel in the Bahamas, we would have to say, here's where Cory Johnson is going to be, it's open to the public if you want to come watch him appear at this meeting. No longer have to do that, so that will be helpful to provide some flexibility for using that remote option when needed. The rest of the requirements are still there. You still have to be able to see and hear everyone, we still have to do roll call votes. We still have to announce that someone will be appearing remotely, but much easier to do it without having to give that public invitation. Couple of employment law tweaks. The paid leave law, so starting in January, the Paid Family and Medical Leave Law will go into effect, which gives employees a number of weeks of paid leave options for medical or childbirth or other qualifying reasons. That's paid for through a premium, that's a small percentage of employee wages. DED will set those wages, it's going to start out at 0.88%, there's a statutory maximum that says it can't go above 1.2%, and they reduced that, so now the maximum is 1.1%. So, big news there. There was also a pension reform bill. This actually is, I think, kind of significant for a number of long-tenured teachers in particular. The overall bill made a number of adjustments to all kinds of public retirement funds, but for teachers, the early retirement age has been lowered. The primary, the normal retirement age is still 65. You can retire before that, but there are, you know, penalties in the amount that you can get of that pension. But there has been a 62-year-old cutoff where you can retire early, and that penalty is not as steep if you have at least 30 years of service. That early retirement threshold has been lowered to 60, so age 60 plus 30 years of service, and you get that lower percentage reduction, so that that early retirement can be more doable. Kind of hand-in-hand with that, that change does result in some increases in employer TRA contributions, but there was a state increase in pension aid that should cover that. So those are just a few of the policy changes that did end up going into effect.
So there were a number of other proposals that were discussed during this session that are not included, were not included. Things like a discussion about alternative teacher compensation or QCOM being eliminated, the elimination of non-public aid for non-public schools. That was surprising for many people in the public to know that they, that aid even existed. We were, there was discussion of further modifications or more extensive modifications to earn safe and sick time and paid family leave laws. Of course, our local authority to renew a Capital Projects levy did have bipartisan support but did not make it into the final bill, and then further concerns about public data request laws. So I want to again thank the members of the Legislative Advisory Committee for their active participation, and I will ask Chaz McCready to wrap us up.
Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni, board members. I'm Chaz McCready. I'm speaking to you as a parent, a parent volunteer. I'm speaking to you also, expressing my thanks for the terrific education that both of my kids have gotten from kindergarten and had graduated. I'm very, very, very happy to have had that, but not only that, gave me the opportunity and the privilege to participate in the BAC and the LAC, volunteering in the schools, being able to understand kids and some of the things that their unfiltered mouths would share with you as to how the system works. It made for some interesting conversations, even in talking with the legislators. I've been a member of the LAC from the beginning, and it's grown tremendous in terms of its influence, its connectivity to all of the legislators that represent us across the aisle, both sides of the aisle. Education is important to almost every one of them, and being able to speak, thought was important to my children and other children I know. Not just the mechanics of education, but the heart and why we do this, to educate kids how to learn and how they enjoy doing those things. Being able to have a legislative person understand not only the mechanics they have to deal with, but the story behind it, the story behind of why it's important and why they do that. Now with the things that are happening and the temperament being so difficult, you have to rely on something that this is worth doing, and it's all worth doing because of the kids. The legislative meetings at the Capitol are fantastic. I've been, had the privilege of being asked to testify on things that were important to the district as a parent, and I want to tell you that, you know, Senator Clausen, one of the instrumental people that made that happen, it was amazing, the reception that I got from various committees that I spoke to, and speaking as to why it was important to do what we did. Why this district is so respected comes from the connectivity of all the people that work in the district, as well as the parents and people that support the district. I speak in great thanks and privilege for having done that, and I thank you and all your predecessors for the privilege of being able to do this. Thank you very much.
That concludes our report.
Excellent, thank you so much. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? Anna?
I just wanted to ask, that sounded like a possible retirement from LAC. Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that's not what that was, so I'm so happy that you're continuing on.
No cupcakes for you.
Okay. But thank you to everyone who does, I didn't realize, when I became a board member, I didn't realize how, how, how much collaboration and how much conversation and relationship building was happening from both, both sides of the aisles and with our district, and it goes back to my, I think Senator Aaron Mayquaid said this once, that we are one district, actually. I mean, we have District 196, but Minnesota is one district if we think about all of our students. And I think that we actually exemplify that when we are going out there and we're talking about, you know, what's important to us. We're telling a story that maybe other districts might not be able to tell, and, and the whole point of that is for the students. It's not for us to, you know, to go to work and to have jobs and to have careers and, you know, go up in the ladder of, of success. It's for students, and, and it's, again, it's, it's just rewarding to see so many people and how so many people are involved in volunteering their time and their support, and it's not just parents who have students in the classroom today, it is people who have had students that have moved on and are still excited and still committed to the vision that our district has been able to set and the promise of what we can provide for our students in the future. So thank you to the LAC, Janet, for taking that on and becoming the new leader behind that, and just, anyway, that's it, I'm done.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I just wanted to say, when you show up to the Capitol, legislators, listen. They really, truly do, and I know it takes a lot of time and effort to devote to the LAC and to put these things together and to follow every update happening from the Capitol, because it seems to change every minute, but it is recognized and it truly makes a difference. And I also know that it can be, it can be sometimes tough to focus on the things that we didn't necessarily get past. I really wanted that Capital Projects thing to go through, but, but I think we got to also stay focused on the wins, the compensatory aid, the inflationary aid that we were able to keep. I think those are really, really important, and again, I think that's because of the voices that you bring to the table, so thank you. Excellent. All right. I will call myself up to the podium. I'm not going to go to the podium, though. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's review. Minnesota statute requires that any time that a superintendent is evaluated, at the next public board meeting, a summary of the evaluation is provided. Normally, I have more than three minutes between meetings to prepare that summary, but it don't work tonight. So the board met at 5:00 PM tonight to review Superintendent Michael Bolsoni. The board concluded, out of the six goals Superintendent Bolsoni was provided, he was effective in meeting five out of the six and highly effective in meeting one out of the six. Out of the two standards that the board provided for Superintendent Bolsoni, found that Superintendent Bolsoni was effective at one of the standards and highly effective at the second standards. Overall, thank you Superintendent Bolsoni for a fantastic first year as a superintendent. I have to keep reminding myself, it's only actually been your first year because the results have been very appreciative. If there are any questions or comments from members of the public about the superintendent review, they are free to contact me, and my email address is listed on the district website. This is the report tonight, so I do have to ask, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, additional comments or questions from board members? All right. How did I do with three minutes of prep? I think I was good. That brings us to old business tonight, and I'd like to welcome Adam Lloyd to the podium to go over the 2025-26 preliminary budget.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the School Board, Superintendent Bolsoni, and the District 196 community. My name is Adam Lloyd, Controller in the Finance Department for District 196. This is the moment you've all been waiting for tonight. Tonight, it is my pleasure, on behalf of District Administration, to present the 2025-26 preliminary budget for a second reading and recommended approval. The final draft of the preliminary budget book is included in tonight's board packet. The preliminary budget was presented to the School Board at the June 9th meeting for its first reading and review. Since the June 9th meeting, no changes have been made to the budget numbers, and only minor editorial changes have been made to the budget book. Tonight's presentation includes an overall summary of the financial information presented in the budget book and at the June 9th School Board Meeting. School districts are required to approve a preliminary budget by June 30th each year pursuant to Minnesota statute. The preliminary budget is the second stop in the budget cycle, which will continue with the final budget cycle in the fall and conclude with the district's annual financial audit planning, annual financial audit beginning next summer. Total budgeted revenues across all funds is $701 million. The General Fund, at $528 million and 75.3%, comprises the largest portion of all revenues. The Internal Services Funds, which include the district's self-insured health and dental plans, account for the next largest share of revenue at 12.9% due to increases in premium rates effective with the 2025-26 fiscal year. The Regular Debt Service Fund, which accounts for the district's long-term debt obligations, accounts for 5.1% of budgeted revenues at $35.7 million. Total budgeted expenditures across all funds is $894 million. The General Fund, at $533 million and 59.6%, comprises the largest portion of all expenditures. The Building Construction Fund accounts for the next largest share at 22.4% or $200 million in planned expenditures. The Internal Service Funds account for the next largest share at 9.4%. The district project, the, sorry, the district projects a total fund balance at the end of the 2025-26 fiscal year of $247 million, with the General Fund accounting for nearly $1.25 billion. $103 million of fund balance. The special revenue funds, including the nutrition services and community education funds, account for nearly $13 million. The building construction fund, debt service funds, internal service funds, and fiduciary funds account for the remaining projected fund balance as shown on this slide. Respectfully, District Administration recommends approval of the 2025-26 preliminary budget. After approval by the board, the budget book will be posted on the district's public finance website. I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent, thank you, Adam. This is an action item for the board tonight, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve the 2025-26 preliminary budget?
So moved.
Motion by Jackie, seconded by Leah. At this, at this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Darn, I thought we would scare him with some crazy questions. No, thank you, pretty straightforward second reading. I'm going to say it like I do every time this comes up, and members of the public that have questions regarding our budget, look at that board budget book that Adam talked about. It really does an amazing job of outlining how we use our, how we take a very, very complicated thing like our, the third largest school districts in the state's budget, and break it down step by step and answers a lot of questions. So I always, it's my little call-out to anyone watching or listening, if you have questions about our budget and how we spend, that's a great resource. We have a motion to approve the preliminary budget by Jackie, seconded by Leah. Any, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. We have no new business or other action items tonight, so that brings us to the end of our agenda, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent updates.
Okay, thank you, Chair Johnson. I want to remind families that there are various opportunities for students ages 18 and younger to access free meals this summer. You can visit district196.org for complete details, which include the locations and times for free meals. Our summer community education programming started last week. We welcomed 8,810 participants across 552 programs just last week. Some of the most popular programs included swim lessons, theater, gymnastics, LEAD Camp, which is leadership empowerment, activities, and dance, SES Adventure Camp, a class called Preventing Brain Drain, and a variety of high school sports camps. Camp Propel extended your services and credit recovery programs also continued at many of our buildings and continue through the end of, through the end of June, and they are currently serving more than 3,000 students across our district. And to learn more about summer programming through community education, we encourage people to visit their website at ce.district196.org, and that's community ed, c-e.district196.org. And that concludes my report.
Excellent, thank you Superintendent Bolsoni. Are there any items that board members would like to share tonight? Catherine?
I just was excited to see the kind of convergence of my day life and my time on the board when I saw that Egan High School from District 196 won the Minnesota Department of Health Escape the Vape video competition that was held. So they created a video to work, to convince other students about the dangers of vaping, and so if people wanted to see the award-winning video, it's at mnescapethevape.org. So, wanted to recognize them.
Thank you for sharing. I did watch the video, and it was good. Any other items for school board members would like to share? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Robyn, seconded by Anna. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Our next regular meeting is Monday, July 14th, and we are adjourned.